Safira Pakistan, your dreams come true. From the country, the country's voice and your recognition.
Safira Pakistan.
My team, with the team of Jio Kama program, Safira Pakistan, first and foremost.
Safira Pakistan actively works to strengthen the bond between Pakistani Americans across the nations.
I really appreciate Waqar Ali Khan who carries this process very well indeed.
The community of the people is always there. The success and accomplishment of the people are always there. First and foremost, we are bringing like minds together.
Congratulations for putting a great program together and thank you for connecting so many Pakistanis from all over America to each other.
Everywhere, at every moment, you see Safira Pakistan. Bismillah, Ahamanir Rahim, Assalamualaikum. Nadine, my friend Waqar Ali Khan, here with the program Safira Pakistan. As we know, Pakistan American business community is very rich in America. And they have many businesses, many industries, and they are running from small business from one billion to billion dollars business. Alhamdulillah. And today, a very important meeting happened with Deputy Director Dilawar Sayed. He is the Deputy Director of the largest small business administration in the nation. And he is Mayor Farah Khan, who is the mayor of Irvine. They invited him to the local business community, leadership and local Chamber of Commerce meeting. And they talked about it and they told us a lot of good programs. The most good thing they told us was that the government buying domestic buying was six hundred sixty-two billion dollars. Among them, Biden spent fifteen percent on minorities, such as black, Spanish minorities, women's. And I think this is almost one hundred billion dollars above. So we can achieve this and we can certify our company and we can achieve this business. In addition, they told us a lot of great ones who are available for small business. In addition, the Pakistan American Chamber of Commerce asked me a question. We said to them that the home business, the physical business, you are home business. And they are doing home business. There should be a loan program for them, which doesn't exist in equity based. And they were given a loan from fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars to make their home business flourish and run. At that time, they had all the meetings and had a lot of good experiences. Nadine, let's see this program. You will be surprised by this speech, what facilities, what benefits are available to you as SBA. Please say it again.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm starting to count down this news. Thank you so much for being here today. It's such an honor to have with us Deputy Administrator Dilawar Sayed, who visited Irvine not too long ago in a different capacity with the State Department. So we're super excited because now he comes in not only in a new role, but with new information, resources and programs specifically for our small business committee. And I think that's something that we really want to make sure we're connecting everyone with. So I want to talk a little bit about what's going on not only in Irvine, but in Orange County as a region. We are becoming one of the fastest growing business hubs and in the country, not just in the state. And we're doing that because of everyone that's in this group. It's the work that's being done by our organizations, by our business chambers, especially our ethnic chambers, that are really pushing the envelope when it comes to businesses succeeding. So not just starting new businesses, but making sure that those that are in place are thriving and have the support that they need to continue that growth. One of the things that I always highlight in our city is my understanding of the business committee. Having these roundtable discussions, having an opportunity to sit with folks and ask them what their needs are and where we can help them. And so through those conversations, two paths emerged. And both of them not only benefited Irvine, but benefits Orange County as a region. And one was the small business direction. And that was really making sure that our small businesses have the support and resources needed to do all the work that they need to do. So when we got our recovery funds from the federal government, I set aside five million dollars for our small business committee. And thank you. Through that, we saw the impact that it had. People, our small business community members were able to open up offices, provide resources and make sure that they were actually connecting with other chambers and building upon what they already had. And we saw that impact happen and it basically trickled throughout Orange County. And I think that's what's really important is knowing that when you are supporting those that are on the ground doing the work that UCIs and Innovations are always great. The second path was the Innovation Council. And this brought together more of our established corporate businesses, their CEOs, our educational institutions, our developers and our venture capitalists. Making sure that we were reinvesting in our talent here so that we weren't losing talent to Silicon Valley or Boston. That we were making sure that we had a place for them to grow right here in this region. And we're doing amazing work with that. You know, this city has just started a letter of intent. They will move on to the MOU with Sunstone Management to start a accelerator program right here in the city. And that's going to be exciting because that's making sure that when we say we want to reinvest and support our business committee, that we're actually doing the work to make it happen. And then of course, in the future, hopefully in the near future, we'll see a partnership with UCI and their school of management. They have tracks, so basically they have a competition each year where students are able to get guidance from their professors and then they have a competition, they get funding, resources and opportunities. We want to make sure that everyone is able to thrive and feel like they are supported right here in our region. And then, you know, with that, I think, I just want to thank all of you that are here because you're really the boos on the ground. You're the ones that are doing the work, that are communicating with our office, letting us know what your needs are. And that helps us make sure that when opportunities like having the deputy administrator here happen, that we are like, yes, we are ready to host you, we're ready to bring the committee in and the committee shows up. So with that, I'd like to introduce our special guest today. And you know, Dilawar comes to SBA from the State Department, where he championed American businesses as special representative for the commercial and business affairs. And I know many of you got to hear him when he was here last time. And as the State Department's top commercial diplomat, Deputy Administrator Sayed advocated for US companies to compete and win abroad and help ensure US competitiveness in markets across the globe. In this role, he mobilized the private sector to support the people of Ukraine in the wake of Russia's invasion and advocated for commercial deals in strategic sectors such as aviation and defense, energy and technology. And with that, I bring to you our amazing special Deputy Administrator Dilawar Sayed.
Thank you so much, Farah Khan. It's always a pleasure to be with you. And I was speaking this morning that I'm back here for my after three months. And every time I think about this region, I know that we have a partner and collaborator here with American, with Orange County Business Council, my friend Scott Fox, which can be Senator Council. And you guys are amazing. And what I've learned in my career is the ecosystem, it takes all stakeholders, obviously our leaders, but also our volunteers and civic leaders in the private sector to build what you're going to get. It's so special. Thank you for your leadership or helping build Ireland forward, bringing them on the global map. You were talking about just your visit to Barcelona and all the opportunities there are. You know, last time I was here, I talked about challenges. And Sophie, you've heard me mention this a few times in our conversations and through this as well. The challenges that you face, you're facing in the world, the challenges that our country faced. And you know, some of the challenges have continued as we are faced with this moment. And I want to take a few minutes to talk about what are some of the broader issues and how we respond to this. First, let me start with climate change. I think it's safe to say that that phenomenon is having a significant impact on our communities, on our health of societies and on our businesses. I was in Hawaii shortly after La Jolla. Barely burnt to ground. And here in California, we have Paradise California, which that district took place many years ago. We still haven't gone even fully recovered. And extreme weather is causing these kind of incidents to happen even with greater frequency with an impact on people's lives and their livelihoods. A phenomenon that we haven't seen as a humanity, definitely not in our lifetime. Second, geopolitical challenges. Mayor Khan referred to my work at the State Department to support people of Ukraine. I actually joined the State Department shortly after Putin invaded Ukraine. And a lot of my work initially was to support the Secretary, mobilizing the Secretary to support Ukraine. As we speak now, the heartbreak, the violence in the Middle East. Every single day I wake up, it breaks my heart. And I think back, it has some story about communities right here. Most American community, fusion American community. We haven't seen this kind of violence in a very long time. And you know, not too long ago, we couldn't come together like this without creating masks of a comfortable global health crisis that we hadn't seen as humanity since nineteen eighteen, like once in a hundred years. Which coming out of a failure on a path recovery. So when you look at these challenges, whether it's global health, geopolitical challenges, violence in the world, climate change, it may feel these are daunting and they truly are. And it makes this moment very, very unique. Now, I respond to this moment as leaders, as communities, as business, as government has to be equally worthy and intelligent to meet this moment. So since I serve and have the privilege to serve the administration, let me start with what are we doing as the President of Administration? To respond to this moment. So last year, if you just talk about the industrial policy of the information from the past, the scale, the depth of it, we haven't seen since the New EO, seventy-five, eighty years ago. I have an infrastructure action act, bipartisan, Chips of Science Act, yeah, let me repeat bipartisan. Bipartisan infrastructure bill. These are investments we are making in our country and will build these in the future. Again, the scale of which we haven't done as if I'm covered in decades. We have a investment factory that has doubled since twenty twenty coming up. We have semiconductor manufacturing, fat equator from, you know, opposite New York to Cleveland, California, where I spend a big part of my time in Silicon Valley. We didn't build fast in this country. We're doing that now. Renewable EVs, batteries, biotech and an overnight is a hub for that. All of this because there is a clear focus on driving investment. And to share the figure, six hundred and twenty-eight billion dollars worth of promise sector investment has been committed in the first three years of this president's first term.
Social psychologists, sociologists, because we're going to need them when AI really, really takes off. More than over a day and.
And the E O is valuable. The E O is by the way, very detailed document. I would encourage everyone to look at the E O and a very part of our colleagues worked on it so hard. You know, this pretty significant document for the multi-departure. There is an aspect to the E O that talks about that if, if, if I am a startup or a company and I am building a, a model and I, if I think that as the use cases in the industry clearly, you should share safety results with the company. That's pretty sweet. We are saying that we will issue your license. As we are just, we don't do that in free market economy. But we are encouraging you that you should share safety results. You know, new models, someone who actually built models, my team built air models, you know, many years ago. You know, as you may know, it's not a science. As you train the data, you will see results and you see biases, gender, racial and regional. Now, those, those biases could have serious complications if they are in the industry. Okay. So we are asking, there's a, there's a process by which the companies, any way to be asked to share the results, safety results, so we can concentrate the economy to show there's no unintended consequences. So that's how we do campaigns, which again, I, I, it's pretty amazing how prescriptive it's all being. It's not just, that should not do this, but know the process, how to prevent them from happening. That's called good government, that's called governance, which is very important. Second, on your, on your, on your point about, let's remind you.
Sociology.
Oh, sorry, my, my bad. On whether there is, you know, there's psychology, social science. In general, like the host spirit is that we are recognizing that we want to be society positively. I don't believe there is a, it is certainly a, not any, 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 any suggestion on, 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 on involving social scientists. But what I would say is this E O is a guiding marker. It's a first step. Technology is so transformational and it's moving so fast that it's really keep building on this. It is an E O, it's not a legislation. I want to speak in obvious administration, not US Congress. There might be opportunities that, you know, that we could refine this further. But check out there, it's pretty comprehensive, not really the challenges and some of the risks that associate there. Without, without coming in the way of the profession.
What I have to look into that is with the E O, the direction, the policies and the regulations will be coming through the Health and Human Services Department. And that's where I think the social component is going to come from. Recently, I know it's, it's ended right now, but we have a survey that you could participate in to provide input. And I did that December fifth, but there should be more opportunities. And we're definitely going to be working with our regional HHS requirements here to make sure that we're getting you guys connected with them. If there's more opportunities to exchange ideas, to get more input, that will be ongoing. And I think that's the important component is that's where the social side will come in.
Yes.
And I know.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to be here today and it's wonderful to be able to. And we have had the pleasure of meeting with Mayor Khan many times. Of course, he's been very supportive of our effort. We're basically involved in integration of innovation and AI across the board, including the education system. How do we prepare our children and youth to enter a market that's shifting as we speak? Especially in the case of AI, which is really changing industries across the board. So I, my question is how the SBA can help organizations like us, non-profit, which is really addressing a segment of the development of society that traditionally has not been a part of the picture. Where it's been traditionally, it's been primarily economic activities across certain industries, but not necessarily with the, for example, education or other aspects, as the other gentleman mentioned, the social aspect of the development as well as of course, you know, the environmental. And I think that this should be a process that should start at the age of five or six. But we've had a really difficult time getting the community involved in the process and really fitting into any specific category per se that we are actually part of the bigger picture. That we're building civilization here, that the purpose of education, for example, is to build a community, to build a civilization, which is, I think it has to be, especially AI, with the integration of innovation and possibilities that AI is creating. I think the picture is changing very quickly and our future as a country, as humanity, it really depends on how we integrate innovation across the world to raise the quality of our businesses. I want to, yeah, I can, I can speak to that. So a couple of ways where we are, we are focused on. One is driving the awareness for small businesses as to how to use data science, machine learning, generative AI tools, I'm sure many of you have played with. Take a look at SBIR now slash events. You'll be amazed. We have four chapters that are holding training on how to use chat GPT to augment your marketing for small businesses. Apparently, there's four chapters. I saw recently one in Southern Nevada that is for cold head of a dark talk about using AI runs small business, augment, you know, the sales of marketing, you know, how, how, using the capability. So this, that's what I, you know, we're focused on how we reach this knowledge gap. Because I think with this, you know, small, small businesses, they often don't have either the resources or perhaps the background to be able to engage in this technology. And the pandemic taught us this. It was actually a springboard in getting this digital because you lost immediately, very quickly overnight. You need to connect your customer. So the option of how social media, Instagram, if you're using it to promote your business or engaging your customers, that don't happen overnight in the pandemic. So we are learning from that and say, okay, how do we proactively close the gap at this time when this technology is taking off, probably takes the speed and it's scaling up huge. And so our one we focus on is education and growing records. Second, I'm taking up some of the share. When it comes to resource stays on the finer side, the SBIR, SGR program, how we are familiar with SBIR. SB is Small Business Innovation Research Grant. And those are programs that are designed, it's a grant, by the way, that SB ministers with the help of our federal government partners, DOD and other agencies, and these are innovation grants we make to companies, small businesses, startups, who are building technology that needs more funding before it becomes commercial. So that's where we are playing in, even on abandoned, to drive economic opportunity and entrepreneurship in the country.
We have one more question, but let's try to make the questions as brief as possible because we're running out of time.
Oh, wait, actually, my name is Ryan Follins, the director of the PCI Entrepreneur Center. I love to talk and connect with education. But I am on Instagram live and we do ask the students watching and they have a question. And it sounds like a lot of this is support for people who already have businesses in their past, that college spot. What is your advice for student entrepreneurs to get plugged in and to get access early? And this could be something that maybe each of you could answer on a high level so that we can get them interested in taking advantage of things as student entrepreneurs. Because let's face it, we want them to become the next people taking advantage.
Totally agree with Ryan. I had a great visit with UCI mine at Entrepreneur Center actually a few months back. So I'm glad to get in and you're sort of watching for type and so forth. So we absolutely are not just for established businesses on the road, but those who are becoming, you know, to our businesses. Secondly, if you are, you know, pursuing a, a, if you're specialized major with a, you know, deep science focus, again, the option for SBIR, FCTR. I know the UCI mine has a local resident support to help you navigate. I would very strongly recommend those grants. We know somebody who's in our profession called those grants early in their career. And these are not low-level actually grants for the government. It does take some process to go through that, but I would encourage your students also to take over those grants. But it's awesome that they are ordering us this morning and, you know, I'm aspiring on to growth.
I have a question. I had been a small business in Switzerland for about four years and that gave me another opportunity to expand time over there. One of the things that I learned about their society, which is very interesting and I wish we could really implement it here is that in high schools, people at the ninth grade, they can actually decide in the profession that they're interested in. You know, they can pretty much start, you know, learning about, you know, how to be a hotel manager or how to be a plumber, how to be a electrician, how to, you know, and so on. So they don't, actually, they can get their diploma. When they get the diploma, they're already specialized in a particular profession and they can have their own small business, you know, and actually have a high paying job, you know, at that particular field and so on, you know. So if you look at the data that we have in United States, as far as the math records, we might also, you know, the sciences, you know, how well they're doing and so on. You really need to, a little bit of a, you know, of new ideas as far as how we can improve that. And we can maybe look at some of the models around the world and see what works in certain societies. And sometimes they can implement some of those ideas over here and to help us just, you know, detail on that.
So just briefly on this, we have mentioned community colleges, you know, obviously we have a different system for other countries in Europe. Community colleges, it can often be a vocational focus and there's a support as required at the state level and the federal government level. I think that's where we are, we have some of those potentials for us to be able to do more there. So if you want. Yeah, that's right, internships, right, and by the way, the federal government now, we welcome paid interns, right? Which is, you know, I have a safe harbor, we have some future diplomats that are still really keen to pay internship programs. So they are, they are actually helping, obviously for us, it's more the community college side where you can be some more vocational focus during for each.
And I'd just like to add, to go back to the ECI entrepreneurs questions. I actually wish they had a program for me, starting out back in the nineties. I'm dating myself a little bit in college, but you know, my advice to them is get connected with our, with your local chambers. There's so many resources for you. We are going to be going to UCI and you guys need to get connected. Start networking at an early age, especially with small business owners. You know, in our networking events, not only we get to meet incredible people who own businesses where you can learn from, but we also have sponsors, we have resource partners, community partners that could really guide you, you know, to where you want to be. So we're here for you. So we're actually talking with Samuel, shout out to Samuel there at UCI. So we wanted to do an event out there, so we're going to get you guys connected, so thank you.
All right, I'll watch you there, you guys work.
Hi, I'm Tracy Abraham, I'm a business and personal success coach. And if I had a Christmas wish list, it would be a more availability for SBA loans. And Ema's doing really well in her business. And she just mentioned she keeps getting all these requests to apply for loans. She's like, well, where were they when I needed, you know, when I needed the money? And I have a particular client right now that I was thinking about who got into significant personal debt to start his business. He's just starting to get traction in his business now, but he's over his head with thirty percent interest loans or interest on his credit card and won't qualify, he doesn't qualify for SBA or any kind of loans because his credit utilization is high, which dropped his credit score. So my Christmas wish was some kind of refinance loan available to business owners who perhaps are in that situation that will help them get out of that hole. And that's a deep hole that is very difficult to get out of.
That is a deep hole and it's, you know, tough to get this and thank you for doing what you do. That's awesome work. Let me ask a question, it gets you a good answer if you notice. Do you know if your, if your client has engaged with that SBA office? Has he had, you know, he or she has consultation with anyone?
Yes, and denied and actually metified, who's probably in a similar position, higher dollar mouse.
When you say deny, sorry, just clarify that denial would be from our, from a bank or vendor who's SBA backed. And talking about SBA, it's just your office, we have a team here. Chris, if you mind standing up, you know, has, you know, consultation with anybody? You, you could actually set up an appointment and by the way, let me say, it's a task for your resources. We don't invite you, we work for you. So your client has the interview, set up an appointment and say, walk through that conflict that he or she is in and say, what are my options here? And we can provide, you know, that guidance. So I'm just curious if that hasn't happened, I think it would be great. And I'll let you just take it from here, which is fine.
I just want to invite you to get connected with, with me and my colleagues at the district office. I also have another colleague, Eric Malley. I also have another colleague here, Alex Salas, who works in our district office. So the local office is responsible for all of Orange County and the Atlanta Empire. And what I committed to you today to do is to connect you or your friend in need with local lenders that are going to at least explore, entertain, have a conversation, look at what the needs are, because nobody should be dealing with thirty percent, right? Interest on a loan. And so we do have programs, we do have mission-based lenders here in our community that do care and they're only a phone call away. What we pride ourselves on at our office is connecting people to the resources that we need and that's our job. And as Deputy Administrator said, these resources, we, we potentially opt to call them free. They're not free. They have no cost to you because you, as an American taxpayer, have already paid into it. And so it's our responsibility to make sure that you're aware of these resources so that you can leverage them for your benefit.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. And thank you for sharing this. Again, at least a bit as we are talking this, your story that you shared is why we do what we do, why I chose to serve at this moment. Because even as we talk about success, we talk about big numbers that are going to the future, there are a lot of stories to tell. Where folks are running into this issue, industry recovery. Businesses that shut down in the pandemic never, ever come back. And we are in the business of helping meet those folks. So again, thank you for what you do, the community, engage with the office, work with us. And we'll see what options there are from the SBA or some of our other partners that we can direct afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time to be here. Thank you, Mayafar, for making sure we, you know, it's, the, the main question I have is, I guess we can reach out to the local office, but, you know, part of the process is the, how do, how do demystifying the going through the process is, is a chore? So any ideas of how we can try to do that?
Yeah, so I, demystification, let me say this, it's all sides. You have to take, you have to also take a big step. And I'm saying this, I'm putting my entrepreneur hat back on. Often in telephones, like when I was in business, in my previous startup, closed a healthcare contract. It's taken years, years to get, become HIPAA compliant, hardworking data, back and forth. That's what entrepreneurs do, that's what small businesses do. Like, it's, it's, it's a lot of sweat. And you have to grip every day and getting up and having, you know, a belief in yourself and your team and just moving forward. So we will continue where we have to be can to make sure we're demystifying the process. For example, if you go into a certified or SB recovery, you look at the process also by yourself, that's because as an AIA contractor, they actually will walk you through pretty nicely. And it's, the website is well done, it's optimized. We are trying to talk about all the focus I had, the things you could might come back to as a, as a, as a tech guy, to improve our CX, our customer service and build the systems. But we are streamlining the process and it will walk you through what your eligibility criteria is, what it takes to do that. So I think there is an element already to fewer teams to buy because I hear you're starting to look at these things because they are pretty massive. The good news is however, if you want to go through this and you become certified, you have a less level from the security people at ours. So we are making an effort. I would also caution you to be prepared to engage with us. Remember, we are a big country. Yes, yes, SBA district offices, we are capital to SBA. So the effort is to make sure you're democratizing this equity investments or this, you know, loan investments. They don't go, no making third-party partners for, for all time, whether they're digital or they are ready for. Social psychologist, sociologist, because we're going to leave them when AI really, really takes off. More than what it has today and, and. It's going to take one of us, it's going to take community partners like Jay and others and yourself who are serving. I would also say at some same time, if there is feedback, that's something that we can demystify further, let us know. And that's why we brought a team here with you. But that's the working process, right? That we will continue to do as we move forward.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you so much to our deputy administrator, Sayed, for being here with us today. Thank you. And thank you to all of you. I hope this was helpful, educational. And again, we've got resources right here in our backyard that are available for you. So please do make those connections and make sure that if there are issues that you're being faced with, that we're sharing them with these folks here so they can do their job even better. But with that, we're going to wrap it up today. Again, thank you so much for spending time with us and we look forward to future events that will be helpful for you and the other communities in Orange County. Thank you.
Lots in the community here in the, in the Earth Island, we go chambers. I don't want to make this a tech talk, but I do prefer my interest with AI and in the, not the, in the presence.
Okay, so we're very well, Chris as well, those are the district office. Want to see anyone else?
Then run, then run.
Ladies, there you are, on the phone. So many questions. Okay, so the audience.
Thank you, guys, for all of your help, for your time and effort to work to the best. I'm Jo Morrison, President of the National Chamber of Commerce, Orange County. And the question is, I know we're heading towards a great, great new world, electrification, all that stuff. And we're trying to promote entrepreneurship, so we're trying to create more new businesses. However, it seems like there's a disconnect between what our kids are learning and what careers we're preparing them for in the future and what we need in the future. Has the US government identified some of these, you know, cracks where we need to really ramp up the skillset of our, our, our young people to fulfill the needs of our future work environment? I, you know, I keep Googling and trying to find out what are, what are, should we be promoting as far, as far as industries? But I can't really get a good report. Has the government done anything to that? Because there's still a lot of students that I talked to that said, oh, I'm going to be a social media influencer. But with AI, I don't know. I don't think that's going to be around for long. And even with, you know, the people that create, are creative logos and stuff like that. With AI, that's going to pass some of that possibility. So I'm just wondering, are we looking far ahead in the future and are we creating skilled workforce for what we need?
So, um. Before I joined the research and AI company, AI and healthcare companies, I have that perspective when I hear you, first hand. We need millions of data scientists. We need machine learning engineers. We need software engineers. And that's, that's a challenge. And we know that without that, that skill, and by the way, this skill must come from our communities. Because data is fuel for AI. And for us to really make sure that we build this technology for everyone to use and avoid any biases, it, it needs to come from a very diverse workforce, management and so forth. The president passed a rather signed historic executive order on AI for the first time. In fact, we're the only user conduit that's done that at the scale about a month in White House. She seen sign that in the White House. And this, I would really encourage all of you to take a look at AI in terms of order that is posted on the White House. There are a couple of things that are core to the new executive order, which by the way, drags all of us to work towards the adoption of AI. One is to harness the power of AI in government to develop new skills to stay better for all our people. And I'm not going to be a part of these cases here, but there's so much data that we capture. And we can be more effective as citizens, as small businesses, if we have policy, it's powerful. It's healthcare, you can move your home, people's background, you know, that CMS captures, this option is there. By the way, SB also has a disaster response agency, you know, we pass the storms to homeowners and small businesses who are impacted by disasters, this option is there, it's maybe some option is there as well. A big component of this is to also ensure we are workforce ready. And it's turned out, and, you know, I'm not going to speak on our top of education colleagues, but they can, they can write officially. But in our system, the education is really at the local level, right? It's really at the state level and our university systems. And I think I would continue to encourage you to engage with the local leadership to ensure that, that, you know, we have workforce, that is always something that we are focused on. There are innovation grants all across government to federal universities. The universities for the federal government are designed to, you know, encourage. We are, we are giving opportunities to not just major institutions, but institutions that are in the middle of the country where people often don't have access to the next generation technology when it comes to learning. So absolutely, it's a topic. We cannot capitalize on the promise of AI and this emerging technology without having a talent that is ready. But that would require that first, at the federal level, state level, local level. So thank you very much.
You and we have mentioned all the success.
I think you did help a lot of small businesses in the area with the PPP loan.
Right.
Twenty-five thousand, five thousand, we have gone as low as that.
Yeah, so I think we, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but we do need to get started.
Sorry, guys, I will appreciate it for one way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dilavar Sayet, for coming to Southern California, the fifth largest economy of the world.
Well, thanks for having me. Good to see you.
And what is, what is your expectation today with the people you're meeting?
Well, to get the word out, all the good work SB is doing and how do we continue to support our next generation of small businesses.
Thank you.
Check out the good for nonprofits, what's in there. Oh, my God.
So sir, how did it feel today, the event?
Well, it was very successful and we are thankful to Farah Khan and Dilavar and his team, entire team. And it was a golden opportunity to meet so many people here who are in the business, very successful business. And we have Priya here, she's the.
How was it, guys?
Myself are very informative and got good points.
Thank you. Muhammad, how do you like the event today?
Very nice, very, very informative event.
Excellent. So this, Ashif, how do you like the event?
It was wonderful, where it, a lot of knowledge was shared in it and that we can use and implement in our practices.
Excellent, excellent. How do you like this event today?
Fantastic, very informational. What about you? How do you like the event?
I think it was really fantastic. It's great to be able to get such large individuals here to talk to our community.
Excellent, excellent. How do you like the event today?
It's a very informative event and I think we enjoyed it in terms of information. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. How do you like the event today?
I loved it and thank you for being here.
And who you are?
I'm the Bremero Regional Administrator for Region Nine, the best region.
Thank you. How do you like the event today?
What's that? It was awesome.
You ready to serve the community, business community?
I'm a dead servant, rolling up my sleeves. I'm here.
Safira Pakistan, Aapke Jazvo ka Takhtamad. Watan se door, watan ki aawaz aur aapki pehchan. Safira Pakistan. Aitamad, no manto ki team ke saath, jio ka masruo program. Safira Pakistan, sabse pehle aur sabse aage.
Safira Pakistan actively works to strengthen the bond between Pakistani-Americans across the nation.
I really appreciate Waqar Ali Khan, who carries this process very well indeed.
Pal balki sabre aur community raapko ke saath lagadar. Ubhate aur kamyaab wa kamran loon ki dastan. Aap tak pahchane me sabse pehle aur sabse aage.
Putting up a great program, running an excellent platform for bringing like minds together.
Congratulations for putting a great program together. And thank you for connecting so many Pakistanis from all over America to each other.
Har jaga, har pal, aapka apna Safira Pakistan nazar aata hai.
Nadin, yaad rakhie, ye overseas Pakistaniyon ka program hai. Dunia bhar me yahan-yan Pakistanee abad hai, hum unki baat karte hain aur unki opinion aur unki khairat aap tak pahchate hain. Aur hum Pakistan ki tasfiri bhi peesh karte hain. Yaad rakhie, dekhte rahiye OPTV Global everywhere, anywhere, anytime. And also subscribe OPTV Global. Bhulie nahi, aaj hi humare program ko subscribe kare, aur ha, hamari har program ko like bhi kare. Dekhte rahiye program aur hum peesh karte rehenge aapki ne program. Yaad rakhie, bhulie nahi, issse pehle ke aap bhul jayen, TV band karne se pehle, phone band karne se pehle, program ko subscribe kijiye. Aap dekh rahe hain OPTV Global.
Faber Fusion is a company run by clinicians. When we are looking at a patient, we are looking at the patient's medical needs first. Patient is in the comfort of his or her home, they are watching the TV, they are doing their chores while the infusion is going on. And patient's copain deductible will be much lower if done at home than in the hospital setting. Home infusion, all in all, is a winning place for getting infusions done.
It is a heartening fact that you may obtain the best return on investment from your knowledge. You can progress by taking one step at a time every day and getting the greatest outcomes. American education for foreign students provides online certification programs to assist you build your job skills in the United States. AMEDFS offers students hundreds of certificate courses worldwide. There are no limits to learning and with AMEDFS, you can begin your journey of studies by enrolling in these courses at your own pace, no matter where you are in the world. Our certificate programs are cost-effective and can help you improve your skills and knowledge. The best part is that you can learn these courses in your desired duration. We offer countless courses in various disciplines. Many courses are available, including business, information technology, programming and project management. Our mission is to make high-quality education accessible globally. For more information, visit our website, www.amedfs.com or call us on 1909 5762 982.
OPTV is now available on Rocco. Please tune into Rocco.